To the October the 13th, 2015 Board of Supervisors meeting. Glad to see such a big crowd out. We don't usually get a big crowd. So, well, I'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand for our invocation. Dr. Housman has been graciously agreed to give our invocation.
Okay. Let's pray. Dear Fathers, we come together tonight. We come together as a community. And Father, as far as the Board of Supervisors, Father, we pray that you will allow us to play the role of true servants. Servants who serve the community and will make the best decisions for the citizens. Father, that's our prayer. We ask it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Again, welcome. And we'll move right on into our agenda. We have Citizens' Time. I know Ms. Cox, that you signed up for the sewer. I'm gonna let you speak. We got that on the agenda, so we'll let you speak at that time, okay?
She's okay, she's just gonna speak for Valley Property instead of...
Okay, well, it's... Okay, Ms. Cox, yes.
It's nice to see you all again. Every time I come, I talk about septic, which is... I am here representing Valley Property and RGM Erectors. They both have interest in the Fort Chiswell area. I have a letter from Larry Edwards and Robert G. Melton that I want to read to you first. That's more representative of Valley's interest. Gentlemen, Valley Property Incorporated wishes to express its support for the extension of the sewer along Fort Chiswell Road to service our existing facility at 1151 Fort Chiswell Road. Also, when sewer is available, a prospective tenant has committed to lease a new building that will be erected on the lot adjoining our present facility. We also plan to erect a spec building for lease on Lot Number Two if sewer becomes available. The availability of sewer will allow us to additionally develop the remaining 31 acres of the World Farm property, which is also on Fort Chiswell Road. Thank you for consideration in extending the sewer along Fort Chiswell Road, and that is signed. Sincerely yours, Robert G. Melton, President, and Larry Edwards, Secretary-Treasurer. So, and as of... I'm also representing RGM Erectors. I'm the office manager there, and we are the general contractor for the Fort Chiswell Church of God property, and you'll hear from them later. And we just wanted to request, again, the Fort Chiswell sewer, we feel like it would benefit the citizens, it will benefit economic development in that area. We have, like I said, 31 acres there that we'd love to develop. And with things going on in the area, with all the talk we just saw on the news 10 minutes ago, that they're talking about with County and Channel 10 News right now, we need to get that sewer there for our citizens, for economic development, and we're asking for the citizens to please consider voting to put the sewer line through Fort Chiswell. And that's all I have. Thank you. I have copies of letter from Larry, if you'd like.
Thank you. My sister, you. Hello, Mr. Hall. Hello, Ms. Cox.
Nice to see you.
My sister, you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have one more signed up for Citizens' Time. Ms. Myers?
Evening, gentlemen. I have a question about Crigger Road, which is a connector from Drive Road to Cedar Springs Road. It is alligatored about every 10 days in very, very bad condition. And they had thrown down some asphalt in front of one of the bridges, which helped this much. But the condition of the entire road, and I was wondering if we're ever getting closer to paving it, doing something better for that road, Crigger Road?
If I'm not mistaken, it's on the six-year plan. Of course, I believe you're correct. Of course, that's a 60-year plan, if you look at it realistically, but...
Exactly. So, are we getting any closer?
But it is on that plan.
It's on that plan, but it's not anywhere near?
No, probably not.
Probably not.
It's not gonna be done in the next few years.
Okay, well, all right. If you would contact VDOT, because it's like this, again, with the potholes, then, with the water we've had and so on, there are places you need a boat to get across. So, if they could take care of some stuff. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Myers. That's all we have signed up for Citizens' Time, but if...
I was gonna say, we've got one more I know of.
Come on out. Give your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't know. I was supposed to... I just got here.
That's my fault, I didn't tell you.
I'm John Pascal. I live on Sheffy Town Road. And that road was on the list for a five-year plan back when I first moved there. I've been there eight years. And now it's off of the plan. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let me cut this off. But I've been there eight years, and it was on the plan when the lady before he took over in our area, you know? And now they say it's not on the plan. And it is such a rough road through there now, and it's dusty, filthy, and nasty. Mud holes, chug holes. My yard is full... My yard is full of... Hey, I'm on... I'm up on the stand, okay? I'll call you back.
Not yet.
But anyway, I've got a... I had my driveway paved when I first went over there. It's white. It's mud that comes down off the road, coming down in front of my house, curves across, runs right down into my yard. And this... It's just been that way for so bad, and it's so bad, your house is covered up in dust, filth, and dirt all the time. And I think it's time, and I got a petition from all the people there, we got 50-some people that lives on that road there that drives cars, and all of them signed this petition for me to bring and see if we can get something done on this road. I don't care if you tar and gravel it, you know, just so we got something to get this settled a little bit for us. We're taxpayers like everybody else, and we ought to be able to have something done about this road. It's been... I know I've been there eight years, and nothing's been done. So, I've been... I appreciate whatever y'all can do, and I'll give this to whoever you need.
Just give it to Mr. Dalton.
And I appreciate this, anything it got planned or anything.
It was ta... I know they took every... You want to explain, Mr. Dalton, about the six-year plan when they took the roads off?
I can't remember all those days, but everybody knows the trials and tribulations of VDOT in Virginia. We had a group of roads on the plan. Dick even told us, because there was no funding available, we took all those roads off. But we did pass a resolution that the ones that were taken off would be put back on in this coming year. Everything that was taken off, it'll be back on, but it's still contention upon Virginia's funding through the Transportation Act. And Mr. Horn is probably correct, that the six-year plan is... I almost say a 10-year plan instead of six-year plan.
Would it do be any good to go to Richmond? I'll do whatever I gotta do.
Well, we're gonna meet with our legislators, hopefully, in the next 30 days or so. We'll be more than happy to come on that date and meet with us.
It's not but a mile through there. And all these people live on that mile, and you won't believe the traffic. I mean, it's heavy trucks and everything running up and down that road. So, I mean, we're not trying to do something that's for just our benefits. Everybody on that road's got the same problem, you know?
Yep, I've been on that road on the course.
Yeah.
What about you live on that road?
When you first start in, I'm on 822. When you first start in for Mule Hill, I'm on the right, the first house on the right down over the bank there.
Is the other road as bad as that one, Kate?
The Mule Hill Road? It's good to the corner. They paved it from the corner up, and from the corner, it's coming in from Davis Cemetery Road. When you come to Davis Cemetery Road, turn right, it's dirt. So, I got it coming this way, and I got it coming this way. So, but Mule Hill has been paved, you remember, well, up above there. But starting right there at Sheffytown, it's all dirt from both ways. Rest of Mule Hill is not even done either. But it's not but one house on that road down there, I don't think.
I didn't know they'd paved Mule Hill.
How?
I didn't know they'd paved Mule Hill.
Yeah, it's been...
Mule Horse is not paved.
Yeah, portion, that's what I'm saying, the upper part of it.
Davis Cemetery.
Davis Cemetery is paved.
Yeah.
The problem is, I don't... He says it was on the six-year plan, and it's never been on the six-year plan since I've been on it. It was taken off before that, so it's not part of that.
No, it's not. It was before Gene came.
It's not part of the ones that we took off. If it was ever on there, it was on before that. Well, we've got it ever planned for 30 years.
There's a lady that was old before him.
Sue Crick.
Yeah, that's who told us, and they were working on it. It's on a five-year plan. As he said, five-year, I was...
Back then, it would've been called five-year plan, because they got reality and moved it to a six-year plan. But years ago, it was a five-year plan, when the next step is a 10-year plan.
Sue was on the board from 2000 to 2008, I believe, December 31st, 2008.
See, I've been there eight years. I married and moved over. I've been there eight years. And we can't... You can't hardly get to ditch this plow or anything over there, so we... I mean, we need something done with it. It's a mess.
Gene, would it be considered real rusty if it had fallen or that?
I don't know if it would or not. I mean, it's... Stephen and I have talked about it a little bit. It's definitely a road, though, that's got a lot of houses on it up here.
And school bus runs it, too.
And it's not mine.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay. I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all.
We'll let you know when we have a meeting with our Jeff Campbell, and you can come, and we'll talk about it then.
I thank y'all so much for hearing me and talking to me, and appreciate what you can do.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Is anyone else that'd like to speak during Citizens' Time? Here and now, I'll close Citizens' Time, and we'll move right along with our agenda. The minutes of the September 22nd, 2015 meeting. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second to approve the September 22nd's minutes. Any corrections or changes? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes, motion passes. Next item is payment of invoices. Entertained a motion, paid invoices.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, paid invoices. Any invoice any board member would like to discuss or asked any questions about? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horn?
Aye.
All right. All right. The chair votes, uh... Okay, moving right along into old business with the Iman Ho Civic League. Ms. Waller?
We asked that that be tabled. She couldn't be here.
Okay. Okay, next item, Fort Chiswell Sewer. Mr. Ed Britta-Bush?
Ed is not here, but we have all the information that was sent to us concerning Pump and Hall. And we have a group of people on it, saying that we talked about this last time Mr. Hale brought the septic up, and the packets delivered to me. We also have an email from Ask the Questionberry.
You want to hear their field?
Yes.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Would state your name and address, please?
Kenneth Questionberry. My address, what church is? My address, what church address?
Your address.
264 Crimson Lane, Max Metta's, Virginia.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Kenneth Questionberry. I'm the senior pastor of the Church of God in Fort Chiswell. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. As you men all know, our new church is under construction. We have high hopes that we can have services there by the time the holidays arrive. So, in Fort Chiswell Road, we came to the board previously asking for permission to sign a pump and hall contract. We have a signed, engineered septic plan, but it's priced somewhere around $42,000. We feel that it is far more than our church needs for capacity and occupancy. We're coming here tonight simply to ask the Board of Supervisors for help and resolution to our problems with septic needs. We are hopeful that in the near future, a sewer line will be installed in the Fort Chiswell area to expand commercial development and property values to those residents. We are again asking the board to consider voting to approve the much-needed public sewer in our area, in the hope of that installation, the pump and hall is the ideal solution for the needs of our church. If the board will approve Phase One of the county sewer, we will have no need to install the expensive approved septic plan, and the saved money can go to other needs of our church and our community. At this point, our church is willing to donate the land needed for the construction of a pump station to facilitate the needs for the phases of the public sewer to help all the residents of the area. It has been suggested that we have the plan re-engineered to have a smaller septic approved, but our engineer has followed a scale that indicated that the plan would be required amount for the church. It will be time-consuming and expensive to have it reconsidered. This time constraint will prevent us from being in a new building on schedule. We are trying to find a resolution to this problem, and I'm coming to you men for help. An approval for pump and hall from this board would solve this dilemma. We, again, the Fort Chiswell Church of God, thank you for considering our request and for the efforts you make to help us find a solution to our emergency of moving into our building on schedule. We sincerely hope you will approve the county sewer for the good of the county, industry, and we are asking that we find a solution to our issue of septic needs. We have a viable pump and hall contract that we are ready to sign with your approval. Thank you, men, for your time.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Does anybody have any... Any board member have any questions?
I mean, we're... I thought that we had put this in motion to look at the whole... That the whole thing.
The Water Committee has, we've put the advertisement out there. I think what you're asking Questionberry is that timeline really does fit the building in the building in December, I think I heard.
We'd like to be in by the holidays.
And our process is... We'll be lucky to have started the P E R by December.
Could I speak again?
From that viewpoint on, Gary, an application, any funding agency, probably gonna take six months or longer than at least a year, a year and a half to get that implemented.
Could I say something else?
Yes.
It's my understanding that we cannot have a permanent pump and hall system. I understand that. I'm not asking for that. What I'm asking for is you just side with us, allow us 18 months, two years. And at that time, if county sewer is not available, then we will install a certified engineered septic system. I'm asking for a space of grace that will save this church thousands of dollars that we could turn back into our community. That's all I'm asking.
Like I said, we had a meeting with the pastor, and Ed was at that meeting, and Tuck was there. I had a list of all the people attended. But that's exactly... That was held at your church, and you and Mr. Melton, and two people from the Health Department was there.
Clayton Ayers was there.
Right. They... I understood him to say at that meeting, and under the regulations, he couldn't do a temporary.
You've got the regulations in your board package. If you strictly read the regulations, you cannot do a temporary.
And that's what he told us. I understood him to say you could do a permanent, but it was issued to the county, and the county had to contract and administer, and it was ongoing without a resolution, is what he told us that day.
I wasn't there, can't tell you what. He may have said that, but in the package, the regulations require a resolution by the Board of Supervisors or the board. And I understand, because sometimes people speak, and people are saying one thing and actually meaning something else.
Okay.
All regulations are in your package, how you can go about them. If you are absolutely correct, the board has to be the pump and hall. And the contract is with the Health Department. And you have to separately have to have the contract with the church, allowing certain access to that facility to do that. And I think the one... The only example we really have is the one that was in Blaine where the group did the Indian village that called a permanent pump and hall situation. I thought Blaine can do that today, and they're still in that. And the reason they went to the pump and hall was because there was new means, methods for them to ever get sewer for the Indians. So, they've been in a permanent pump and hall several years.
Okay, without getting too far in the weeds, which is really easy to do here, but is there any reasonable way that we can give these folks relief that... We've had a lot of time to think about this. Other than 18 months or two years out, we might have a sewer line.
Well, the means you have are outlining those regulations that we sent you last Friday. And that's the means. I think the board has the means to do that, but there's no will. I mean, it's... We haven't discussed that part online. While we were at the previous meeting, instructed the Water Committee to start the process for permanent solution, which we have, and are moving as fast as we can to get that done. So... But we all know the reality of Castleton Road and Bearin Springs, how long it took us. I think we were there a lot sooner than the Virginia Department of Health would let us do it.
I'm glad you were the one that brought that up instead of me. Thank you very much. Virginia Health Department has refused to enforce the law on illegal water system at Bearin Springs. It's in our board package. It's been three years, and it's back in our board package again. In verbatim words, "It appears you're violating the law." It's a travesty to say "appears," but it's a nice word to put in a letter if you want a weasel. Here is a guy that's selling drinking water, and the Health Department has let it go on for, what'd you say, six years?
At least... At least six. I know it was happening when I came on.
So, is this the same Health Department that can regulate whether we can put in a pump and sewer to try to do a pump and hall to make it right? This just doesn't make sense to me that the Health Department has these regulations, but no action. The man's violated the law openly and refused notification of breaking the law. We can't do anything about him. He's selling drinking water. We're talking about processing this sewer, and we're all tied up in regulations. So, you're saying the board can make a motion, then, to do that?
I'll just read the regulations.
All right.
The government entity entered into the contract with the Department, Virginia Department Health, setting forth that the governmental entity will provide pump and hall services either directly or through a private contractor holding the sewers, handling permit to the homes, commercial establishments, or occupied structures. For the period the occupied structure is utilized or until connection has been made to an approved septic sewage facility, excuse me. Two, upon completion of the contract between the Department and government entity, the commissioner shall issue a single pump and hall permit to the government entity. A separate construction permit shall be issued to the government entity for each sewage storage facility. We're only talking about one here. When the government entity provides the sewage pump and hall services, it shall conform to the conditions contained in Virginia Administrative Code 5610-380 and Article 8, Virginia Code 5610-1020, it sequels to Part 5 of this chapter. And later on, he goes through the... It's written to you a letter from Daniel Price, and goes through the whole process. So, you can make a motion to start the process for you to make an application to the Health Department, because the Health Department, then, based off your application, will either deny or grant.
Okay. Ms. Turner? I think that we need to make... I'll make a motion that the county make that application with haste, and let's not limit it to one. If we're gonna do the thing, let's leave it an open permit for that area, simply for that area.
What... How big area you're talking about? Just the mile within from the school?
Yeah, and you were wrong. I measured it. It's not a mile.
It's not?
No. It's eight tenths of a mile, which turns into about 4,000 to where the pump station would be.
Did you say eight tenths?
Yeah, eight tenths. You're close.
That's close.
That counts in horseshoe. The motion is that we go ahead and apply for a pump and hall, just staying moving, instead of saying for one site, say for that area.
Okay, I have a motion to apply to the Health Department for a permanent pump and hall permit. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take it, Mr. [inaudible].
I have a second. Any discussion?
May I add something?
Yes.
Making an application and getting a permit doesn't... It's a good faith effort on the board, doesn't guarantee that permit will be issued in time for being occupied with a septic or by the hall. It is what it is, it's an application. And dealing with Virginia Department of Health is a process of how to go about it. Just wanna talk... You know how long you've been dealing with trying to get a septic permit?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. You know our pain, while the board, I think, has got a motion for the help. It may not get you to the timeframe you already seek. So, just to be clear on...
So, what you're saying is there are no guarantees?
That's exactly right.
Well, I assume we're in a discussion period. Well, I assume we're in a discussion period now?
Yes.
Uh, what level of authority is Mr. Rittenberger?
He's the local head sanitary for environmental engineering. Tuck is the permitting guy on the front.
Yeah.
Mr. Ritterbush is the next step up. Scott Honecker and Abby is the step above him. And then from there you go to whoever the regional director is. And we don't have one of those, so the lady in southwest Virginia, Dr.
Is it a height?
No. She's stationed somewhere around Scott Lee lives or somewhere.
So she's acting?
Yes.
I'm back.
And Dr. Smith left here, left there, space over. And then from there you go to John Hall back at State.
If I could speak again or if I could defer?
Because I always talk about septic. Every time I see you all, I'm talking about a septic tank. One thing I want to add, because I'm not sure it's not, I'm not understanding something completely. This is actually with the church, not with our GM, but it is with our GM because we're a general contractor. But anyway, we applied for a temporary pump and haul with the health department. That's how we got that meeting with Ed and Tuck. So we have already started the process for a temporary pump and haul. Now I know right now we're discussing a permanent pump and haul. Is there any way to, to speed the process up by establishing a temporary while we wait on this permanent?
Well, by the code section, we cannot, we cannot apply for a temporary pump and haul unless it's like an emergency situation.
Well, what Ed told me from the Virginia Department of Health, he said you can have a temporary pump and haul as long as it's not an indefinite, as long as you have something pending that will become permanent, whether it be a permanent pump and haul that we apply for, whether it be an engineered drawing that's been signed, which we have, we just need more time to get a less expensive one if we need to follow that process. Or we need you beautiful people to approve that sewer.
I was reading the code, the code section here.
Okay. And that's why I'm here, because I don't understand.
Well, from my discussions, I wasn't telling you, my discussions, a temporary pump and haul, this is what they're going to rule. It has to be.
Is that what he said?
Set period of less than a year. And there's got to be, within that year, there's got to be a permanent solution. And they will not issue a temporary pump and haul. And that's the reason we're, we're at the point of talking about the permanent pump and hauls.
Well, and that's my point though. We do have, okay, we have a permanent solution that we can install if nothing else works. If, if we ha, if we can get a temporary for one year, in the meantime, we start dealing with the health department for a permanent, or we have the backup permanent of this forty-two thousand dollar septic, or we have the permanent solution of going back to the engineering board and getting a less expensive, hopefully sewer installed.
Well, that, that sounds like a great, but if you say that to the health department, you'll be putting the septic system in.
Or they can approve the permanent. I mean.
Of the permanent.
Or we get a permanent sewer line for the county.
Well, the long-term goal is to get permanent.
Right.
I think that's where we're headed. That's the direction the board has voted on to give the staff.
And there's no way that we can get within a year the approval for the sewer line, pump station?
If we donate the land for a pump station, I have board members sitting here, you are eight tenths of a mile. You'll pick up trailer park, the church across the road, the houses, the development on the other side of us for eight tenths of a mile.
And thirty-one acres that we, that our GM and Valium develop.
But what I'm asking, Mr. Dalton, if we could have everything in place where we tell the health department, this is the permanent solution.
Mm-hmm.
Within a year.
If you have cash in hand, sure, we can make that happen. There's no doubt about it. Thirty days aside period, that's a mile, less than a mile across there, it's a pump station. There's some grab, there's sewer line and a horse and some power. That's, that's a pretty simple issue, the cash in hand. Your current estimate, or last session we had was maybe bucks. We have maybe bucks, we've already had the grant.
May I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
Like, when, when you applied for the, you know, the, the building permit and, and that sort of thing, I mean, the, the health department had to come out. Did they tell you at that point that it didn't work? I mean, that the land didn't perk?
No, it does. That's how we have an engineered, we do have septic permit. We have a septic plan.
Okay, so they've, they've given you an approved plan?
Yes. It's just extremely expensive and overkill for the church. But we talked about that last time.
Okay. On, on this, on the permanent pump and haul, it says, you know, the occupied, for the, the time that occupied structure for the period, the occupied structure is utilized or until connection can be made to an approved sewer facility. I mean, does that, is that telling us that the health department, if you have a, an approved facility? I know, and forgive me for this, I know the health department doesn't think about cost. They're not the least bit, you know, it, it's either approved or, you know, or not approved.
For the permanent pump and haul.
To get that in there as quickly as we can.
Yep.
We have to do that first. That's what.
See, one have, else, have any?
Well, they're, they're already in the process of doing the temporary one, right?
We've, we've applied, we've applied and had the meeting about that. And what I understood, we had to come to you as the next step on the temporary.
Exactly what Rittenberger told me.
Okay.
Exactly. So can we get a hold of this, this Ed?
Ed, we just call him Ed.
Just call him Ed and let him know that we take, if we get this vote approval, let them know what we want to do and maybe this is a little bit further down the road to start to extract. Let's take the vote first. I'll call the question.
Okay. Call the question of apply for a permanent pump and haul permit to the health department. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 I'll, I'll say aye, but you, pardon me, I don't, I don't think it will work because there's an approved plan that they can, they can go to.
Okay. And Chair, both sides. Mr. Dalton, can you set up a, a meeting with Mr. Ritterbush and, and with?
What I'd like to do, if we may, is just fill out the application and have a meeting at that time. We can either present it, deny it, approve it.
But, you know, I don't understand them telling, them they could apply for a permanent when the code section says the, you know, unless they know some way to, to get around that.
I don't think so, because that's the reason you've got a copy of plans in your package about, they went about. I'll let her check something out. I wanted you to be back.
Probably.
Well, the church wants you to be the good guy.
We'll try, I promise you, we'll try our best.
And we appreciate it. And we really do appreciate the efforts. And I know this is taking a lot of your time and, and we appreciate it. But it's really important. It's forty thousand dollars to church members, a lot of money.
That's what we're here for. But like I said, we'll do, we'll do the best we can. Anything that we can do, we'll do.
Thank you.
While, while we're discussing this, have they ever accepted if, if we had an engineered schedule that we will have a sewer line down there in three years? That's not unreasonable. If, if we need to do that and with the engineering input to pick up that additional sewer along ninety-four, it could even be a viable project, I would think. And if you had a laid out phase one, which would be this short line, and then whatever phases after that, but it would only mean sizing the pump station correctly to handle phase two and phase three, wouldn't it?
Yes. That just sounds too perfect in their world to make sense now, because I don't think that the red, the administrative code gives specific time limits of what they can do. And the reason they did that is to take it out of their hands. Either you need it or you don't. And that's how they all rule. We submit water sewer plans. Just every few weeks, you know, we've got five or six projects going. Whatever it reads, you guys have leeway. They will not have leeway on those kinds of discussions. We can ask all we want to, and we will ask and we'll push, but rarely will that happen. But they, if they catch it before it's permitted, they take a tough stand. After it's permitted, they will not, like at Bearin Springs, take water or sewer away from someone's scotty just because it may not meet the regulations. They'll give them notice to the board and they'll continue to operate because some water's better than none.
I, I think sewer's probably in that same category if you're the one who used the outhouse.
Business done.
I say we'll apply and we'll have a meeting and we'll do what we can.
We appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
We'll, we'll keep you informed, or Joe will keep you informed of, of our progress.
All right. I might be back next month to talk sewer again. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I want to, of course, I, I am the contractor down there. My plan was to go ahead and run a bull valve at the, when we put this sewer line in and run it all the way down near where we staked out wherever the pump station's going to be that the church is offering the land for. But what's sitting back there bothering me? I've got an answer to my other partners with Valley, partner with Valley Properties on some decisions that I got to make. I, sitting in these meetings was kind of in the understanding that this sewer, this pump station and this eight tenths of a line was a definite go. We have pursued a client and our signer, got a contract ready to sign with him adjacent to the fifty-two bingo club up down there with the Max Miller's Ruth Hand. Do I sign this thing? I mean, if I go there and say, yeah, I mean, I'm going to be in the same boat. I mean, what, what am I going to do about that? And we're, we've got another six thousand square foot spec building I, I'm going to put up to offer to the public again. And then we got two more lots. Actually, we figured it out, but the lot sizes, we can put up five different buildings up through the space we got graded now by changing just a little bit of grade. I got that situation to think about. I, I hear a figure of a million dollars, a million dollars. That strikes me. Because I own with Valley Properties, we own Country Club Heights subdivision here in Withfield, which we're getting ready to push the front of. We're working now to get the new first thirty lots ready. During this discussion, we met with the town two, three years ago, we could put in a pump station back there to bring the sewer up over the bank and to the town's pump station. And the cost of the pump station itself at that time was seventy-five grand. I have a hard time believing that it costs a million dollars to put in eight tenths of a line. And the biggest part of this line is going in field area where the old Route Fifty-two was filled by Donnie Cook, by the state, all the way up to the rescue squad. You know, this thing, this thing is, is helpful to the rescue squad. I lost, I got a thirty-two acre piece up there. We lost a major client that washed out tankers. I got one in Greenville, South, South Carolina, and we had that thing ready to sign. No sewer can do it, too much water. Big, a big cell of water for the county and we lost that client. And jobs for, for the county. The buildings, we're, we're interested in promoting that part of the county. I'm getting old and I don't know how much stress. I, if you got a battle for everything, well, I guess what I'm asking, is the sewer going to happen or not?
Well, you know, we're in the preliminary engineering phase of, and seeing, it hasn't been brought to the board how much it's going to cost. I mean, or the estimate, a million dollars, but we have.
I'm not being dead if that's going to be a million dollars. I, I might not have to work much longer.
But, you know, I don't, we're, you know, talking about the size of the pump station. I don't know what the town or how big a pump station, but.
It's a pretty good pump station. We've got a hundred and seventy-seven acres out there.
But, I mean, Mr. Dalton and, and Mr. Vaughn can talk more and tell you about it than I can, because I have no idea of how big a pump station, what the pumps cost or, you know, how much it costs to put a, put a sewer line in the ground.
Okay. What is going, what is the timeframe for somebody to tell us, say, yes, this thing's going to be built, could be eighteen months? We understand that, that I, that is why I kind of liked what Joe mentioned a minute ago about the open deal if we was to go on and build this. I can't reveal this thing because this guy won't let me. It, it's causing problems if I do, because it's going to be moving. But I'm not going to be able to let him up to store next frame. You, you see what I, I mean, do I do that or we pull up our stakes and go some, back up here in Withfield, build something? I mean, do something different other than trying to work down there? I've also bought the Pure Country building down there, which was a burnt building, looked like crap, right there coming in, popper camp. We, Larry Edwards and I have bought that. We are already cleaned the trees up, tearing it apart, and the sewer system worked out great that come through there to promote that property and my property next door, which I got some.
That's been approved. It will be built.
That, that, see, I know that. That's the reason I'm, I just need to kind of know as a developer, not only for the church, but as for my other businesses also.
What type of timeframe we talking about getting all that back and getting it to us?
It took a year, I mean, we started the exit twenty-four, we have to go through the state, we have to submit the concept, and I counted the P E R, we already had a hand. Public hearing timeframes that you have to have that are mandated, all this related. We go for V D A's loans and things, we have to go through their process. So it took a year from the time we had P E R at hand to get to where we'll have a design in December ready to grow on the street, which is one you talked about down at exit twenty-four. Okay, so that's just a year going through that review and approval process. Maybe shorten up a little bit, but that's what it took. You have to get sludge permits, review of plans, there's all these things you got to do. The P E R part you're talking about, Joe mentioned phase one, phase two, phase three, that's what the P E R does, as well as the environmental assessment that you absolutely have to do regardless. So phase one would be a million dollar piece. But that number came from a design that was done a few years ago. Beanworth did it when they were thinking about the sewer, the subdivision right up the building of your property. And the pump station.
I think.
In around two hundred thousand. You got a force main all the way back to the red hill, as well as all the gravity collection system for the trailer park and all that area. That's why it's a million dollars, question of balance. Phase Two, Phase Three, that gives us the economics that we have to do if we go for V D H and other loans because these systems have to be self-sustaining, have to pay for themselves. You mentioned businesses that might come. That will go into the analysis. Will help greatly in the system paying for itself, especially Phase One, from what you described. It's bureaucratic, it's kind of, it just takes time. So if you have a P E R at hand now, maybe a little less than a year, where you can start building. We still gotta, we've gotta go to engineering, we gotta go to P E R, to E A upfront. That could probably be done. I think so, well, once we get somebody in, we'll select an A D and they do it four months, five months, first quarter next year, maybe, before we actually have that hand. And then we can start the actual application processes and reviews with the state regarding the process.
Well, this.
This is the easiest. The only easy part of this whole project is the church gave you a piece of land.
Right.
Build your pump station, run your force main, and let the rest of it come later. I mean.
It still has to go in the P E R, and so that's how you review.
Well, the E A's out because you don't have federal dollars.
Right.
So whoever designs it, the D Q's a little bit different. What we do know, Bob, is when we bid a twenty-gallon mini pump station, I think you bid on this too. The cheapest price we had was from the rescue squad building back to the high school was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's the reason we ended up with the septic.
I don't know why, I'm really shocked that Andy Kegley with Hope Ministries is not involved in this meeting because of the lots in High Medicine that, you know, that's what all be eligible to hook up to the sewer also. I sold that. I can't remember how many lots we had in there. I know there's at least thirteen up there.
Twenty.
Twenty, something, yeah, up in there. You got that, and then the Mormon Church, the Ever Soul well drilling, uh.
Well.
The, my businesses.
We talked to one of the good people, the Mormon Church, they're willing to connect.
I'm sure they would. I mean.
So we know that. We're not so sure about the trailer park.
Now, the trailer park, I have to agree, would be a question. I mean, you know, it.
Well, I think.
That's just some things I'd like, I'd like to address. I mean, because if, I'd really like the idea, if we tried to get this for the businesses and everybody from the pump station in Phase One to the Masters Church at the top of the hill, which is Fort Chuteville High School, if it was open for a pump and haul, and I did put this new retail store, I could pump and haul for the months. That's the reason I kept pushing with, for the timeframe on when this thing is gonna happen, so I'll know how long I got a fair on pumping and hauling. That's gotta be an issue in our costs as far as the lease. But, and like I said, the way we do it, we got a bull valve over at the Max Meadows Root Hand, fifty-two Bingo and England Automotive. We already got the, the sewer line is at the road. We got a bull valve, we're ready. They had the pipe, I can turn the valve and it's instantly into the county. That's how we're putting our stuff up, but I.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, y'all is with you.
I would say, I understand Mr. Melton's position. I would suggest or recommend that the board not indicate any kind of date as to when that's gonna be done because if Mr. Melton or any other business relies on some kind of date that you say you're gonna have a sewer line there, and then it's not there, I mean, exposes the board to some liability of, we promised a commitment here of a certain date, you know, and then we don't get funding for it, we don't finish the design, or something happens, you know, I don't think we can commit to give Mr. Melton any kind of date just because of the liability exposure there that could be there. I think he, Mr. Melton is a business owner, has to make his decisions on what he can or can't do. If he has a business that's coming in there that is providing economic opportunities, then if he brings that to the J I D A, we potentially obtain funding from somewhere to run a sewer line down there as part of that project, possibly. I don't know how all that works exactly, but I know that's, there's monies available if the investment's big enough to make that happen. But I don't think we can commit to say, we're gonna have it in there in eighteen months or two years, and then if something happens and we don't have the funding, then he's built a building relying on us being there in two years, and then it doesn't happen, then we're exposed, you know?
I understand.
I understand that.
I would ask the negligence board to, I heard county attorney, I heard Bob, is let us bring the health department to the water committee meeting next Tuesday, I think is the day we have. And Bob, I would encourage you to be there. It's nine thirty. Gene's finished cutting corn.
I'm done with this.
And we'll go through this whole discussion. And what I've heard you say is that you would like for your two facilities, the Ritan building and whatever you're planning, that we don't have a building permit on yet.
Right.
That you would want that to be a permanent haul, and you would run the line, put words in your mouth.
I'll put the bull valve out to the road, just like I have on fifty-two.
Put more words in your mouth.
That they'll be ready.
That it's gotta go to, it's gotta go to a pump and haul facility, which would have to be down where the church is at.
No, no, not down to where, I would like to put it on that, those pieces of property, use that same situation with a contract with heirs, with a backup by R and R, just like the church has got. We've got those contracts ready for those people. And it like, we're just coming here and telling you that we have contracts with Heirs Sewer System and Bill Robinson with R and R Septic to back him up. One of them would haul. But, you know, I still got to know, that's why I just asked for a timeframe, because we gotta know what the cost is gonna be for us to pay to have this hauled off all the time. Fellas at this church, just go back to this church a second. This sewer system has been designed. This guy, I don't know where he comes from, anyway, they, we use a thousand seventy gallons of water at the church, up on the hill right now. Thousand seventy gallons a month. Water bill, under forty dollars a month, every month. And you're not talking about a lot of usage, even if they doubled it, which the new church won't hold that many people, it is still under two thousand, two thousand gallons a month. I'm sure my house probably uses the amount of water than that.
I think my email pastor said that, that we, not based off you guys, we went and looked at other, the counties went and looked at other churches of what the actual usage is for similar membership. And those projections are way high. And I said, that's my email to you guys. And I agree with that.
I mean, you know, I've heard it covered your butt, but I think the butt was covered well.
What you got is, the guy's got, put his name and stamp on it.
Yeah, I know.
That's, that's what you got.
And then let the church believe.
One more question.
But I, I do believe, if, and I talked to the health department before I sent the email for the pastor, that if the numbers, actual usage numbers for other churches and similar churches with membership have been used, designed, have been half, what did it?
Exactly. And I, they told us a mess. I'm not only the contractor on the church, I am also a member of the church. So that, that, so you, you know, you could pretty much well bet, I'm gonna be screaming loud. Yeah, I just don't, for short, old school, time management, there seems like there's a lot of common sense left here. A lot. I guess that's out the door anymore. I mean, it seems like the labor forces went to the dogs in a hand basket, and I believe common sense, it must be up in the clouds somewhere and nobody can find it anymore. It's just, things that, big issues are made out of things that I think are just common sense things.
And, you know, I mean.
And I know you got a law by the law. I guess we vote them in. God, I hope we can get them voted out. That's all I got to say about that.
Well, I mean, when you're dealing with the health department, I mean, it's another state.
We're not asking them to go, we're asking them to let us pump and haul with two contractors until we get the sewer system in. Or if that don't ever happen, we'll go back and put the septic, I'll get it re-engineered to what it should be, and we'll put it in. And we can do that and write it. I mean, whatever they need, whatever it takes to get them over the hump, I reckon.
Mr. Hill had another question.
Mr. Dalton, this is a two-part question. It's engineering and finance. If we were private sector, which we're not, we're hampered by a lot of regulations. But if we had access to money to build what we perceive as Phase One, would that hamper the ability for long-term financing?
If you demonstrate you already have the money, you're not gonna get long-term financing except for the private institution like you do some, or other things. Dee, Joe, Mr. Hale, rural development, they've got certain boxes they've got to check. The Virginia Department of Health has certain boxes. If you get beyond those boxes, tobacco commission is boxing. If you get ahead of the curve on them, you're not getting them up. That's, that's just how it is. I mean, I wish it was not that way, you know, but unfortunately it is.
What's the difference in R D and bond financing right now?
We closed loan on Castleton Road last week. It was two and a quarter percent. And private's about two and a half, two and three quarters, so it was cheaper.
Yeah, okay.
Plus you got half of the grant.
Well, the grant's the important part.
Yes. So in essence, it was one percent. Bob, we're not trying to throw water on a hot project. We're just talking reality. And I think reality is where we need to be. But if you'll come Tuesday.
I'll be too.
At nine thirty, if the chairman will refer to the water and wastewater, we'll do everything we can to speed it up. That's.
I need y'all's help to help to get this through. If.
But say it that.
We've got this church going up, and if, I guess, if y'all are interested in Larry Edwards, who's at Gaylock, financial advisor, in us pursuing businesses for the Fort Chuteville District, I mean, that's a guess, I guess that's what I'm kinda speaking. I kinda get upset when I, I come up, and it seems like we, it's always, well, you need one more document, you need one more of this, you need one more of that. Just bring you the whole package together and get it all together. That's what we had the last time. We had all these people that had to meet. Well, you gotta have this document. Well, we did this document. We met with Ben of the church, hour and a half, two hours, meeting with the health department. I sat in that meeting. I thought it was a good. I didn't think it had any trouble. I really didn't with this written book, or this, this man I sit right there and listen to every word he said. I thought he talked very logical to me. But, you know, it's. I don't know.
Well, like I said, we'll do, we'll do the best we can. I will refer to the water committee.
I, I just, you know, I've got to, I just need some answers so I know how to pursue my other stuff up the road, or to go away and do something else, or whatever, you know, it's just, and try to sell them pot lots. I don't.
We'll pursue the permanent pump and haul permit, and then we'll go from there. And like I said.
You understand what I'm talking to him about? If we can get this done and have it open until this sewer, in case I can get this other building where I can pump and haul this other retail store until the line goes up and you turn it on, there may be another one.
Okay. Well, we'll work with the health department and do what we can do.
I'd like to talk to them, I mean, you know.
We'll come to the meeting at nine thirty Tuesday.
Is that the day or not? The day?
Day. Day.
Okay.
Nine thirty in the morning.
All right. I appreciate y'all. I wasn't gonna come up here and gripe, but I can't stand it. I got it. I'm out there in the real world, and I think a lot of people on the health side probably don't live in the real world.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
If you live in this real world, and ain't you been in church and not drinking? I tell you what. If we don't get this settled, I believe I'm going back to drinking, boy.
Well, we don't want you to do that, so we'll, we'll try our best. Okay. And thank you. Well, we'll move on. Mr. Dalton, anything else in our old business? Okay, we'll move on. Then other business, report on Shafter M T C announcement. You wanna do that?
Me. Shafter announced on Wednesday that they would be expanding their facility out there in Fairview Park. I guess that's what the, Fairview Park, they call it up there. There'll be seventy-nine new jobs, high-paying jobs, several engineering positions. And the vice president of, from Switzerland, I think it's where he said he was from, made a prize announcement that is going to expand more. They was gonna bring other product lines to Shafter M T C. So it's, things is looking up. Things is looking good for With County. And hopefully we can get some other businesses, other expansions. We're pushing Progress Park hard, and hopefully we've got plenty of people, industries looking at Progress Park. We just need to land one. And hopefully we put the effort forward and the infrastructure in and everything in place. Appalachian has done a wonderful job of getting more power to With County. I mean, we see new power lines going up. There's, they're talking, they're gonna do the one from Blaine in the Whipple. So I don't know if A E P knows something that we don't, that we're gonna need all this power here, but, you know, they've stepped up and really come through with power. We have three, three redundant power sources coming into Progress Park now, so, so we're, we're looking good. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, let's report on them. Vaco Annual Meeting Voting Credentials. Mr. Dalton, you got that pulled up?
It is. It's on page seventy-five and seventy-six of your agenda. You need to nominate somebody to represent the county at that meeting, to book the business meeting that day.
Okay. I will be there. Joe will be there. Gene, Dr. Houston, are you gonna go?
I'm planning on.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to nominate either myself, Joe, or Gene to be a voting delegate.
You're already on a active committee. I nominate the chairman to vote our vote.
I'll second that.
Have a motion to second.
Is there anybody, somebody?
For alternate.
As an alternate.
Yeah, who'd you say was going?
You.
You.
No, he said.
You don't nominate yourself.
No, no, I'm not going to nominate. Gene, are you going?
I was planning on going.
Why? Nominate Gene as an alternate.
I have a second. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Stormwater Resolution 2015-25. It's a very lengthy resolution. I'm not going to go through and read all three pages. So I take it that all the board members have read the resolution and I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion to adopt the Stormwater Resolution 2015-25. I have a second. Second. Have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it probably has more than adequate crowd that we never have or reported what this resolution is about.
Yep. My question was same thing. Does this fit requirements of the state law? And is there any adverse things in it that are not required by the state law?
Well, this is them trying to change horses in the middle stream, isn't it?
What's happening under Virginia law, when I just got the adopted DEQ water laws today for DEQ, they went from us opting out of the stormwater regulations. And now they're saying under the water regulations, you will have to enforce these regulations, stormwater regulations. So far, I think I just read this fifty-seven counties have read past this same resolution or similar resolution that not to allow DEQ of the state of Virginia to adopt administrative codes like this pump and haul thing. With counties back into the regulation. So I think this is a good resolution. If you don't have our voice heard, you'll be in administrative regulations for DEQ. I don't think we won't.
I agree. And I'll be going to Richmond in the morning. I'm on the VACO Environmental and Agriculture Steering Committee. And we're looking, and we're having a meeting in the morning in Richmond just on this topic. To keep Richmond from putting all this back on, onto the counties. You know, they, they created this monster and they need to not change our opt-out option for DEQ. As we opted out, DEQ's administering it now. And that's where it needs to stay. So VACO, Virginia Association of Counties is behind this and, and behind it one hundred percent for the state not going back and changing and putting something else that the counties have to implement and take care of. Is any more discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Resolution passes. Next item is Budget Committee recommendations. I know, Mr. Garrett, you mind doing that?
Sure. Budget Committee met on October the eighth, twenty fifteen, recommends amending and appropriating the following to With County Public Schools with, with the stipulation, with the stipulation that the county be provided copies upon the receipt of funds and the funds are not to be supplanted with local funds. And these are the, you know, Foundation for Excellence Grant for CPR Equipment, Foundation of Excellence Grant for Computers, Withland Foundation for Fitness Room, and STEM Learning Through the Arts for kindergarten. And you can see the amounts there. We, you know, we discussed that and certainly with these things, if, if they, you have the money for these grants, we want to amend and appropriate. However, we will not amend and appropriate money that they do not get for the grant.
Out of local funds.
Right. We, nothing will be paid out of local funds.
Okay. Coming from a committee, it doesn't need a second. Any discussion, questions? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is Gov. Deals, Surplus Property Sale. You have a list in front of you. You got the, the four items and their high bid. We need to accept, have a motion to accept these bids for the surplus property.
Declare surplus and accept.
Declare surplus and accept the bids.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Aye.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it probably has more than adequate crowd that we never have or reported what this resolution is about.
Yep. My question was same thing. Does this fit requirements of the state law? And is there any adverse things in it that are not required by the state law?
Well, this is them trying to change horses in the middle stream, isn't it?
What's happening under Virginia law, when I just got the adopted DEQ water laws today for DEQ, they went from us opting out of the stormwater regulations. And now they're saying under the water regulations, you will have to enforce these regulations, stormwater regulations. So far, I think I just read this fifty-seven counties have read past this same resolution or similar resolution that not to allow DEQ of the state of Virginia to adopt administrative codes like this pump and haul thing. With counties back into the regulation. So I think this is a good resolution. If you don't have our voice heard, you'll be in administrative regulations for DEQ. I don't think we won't.
I agree. And I'll be going to Richmond in the morning. I'm on the VACO Environmental and Agriculture Steering Committee. And we're looking, and we're having a meeting in the morning in Richmond just on this topic. To keep Richmond from putting all this back on, onto the counties. You know, they, they've created this monster and they need to not change our opt-out option for DEQ. As we opted out, DEQ's administering it now. And that's where it needs to stay. So VACO, Virginia Association of Counties is behind this and, and behind it one hundred percent for the state not going back and changing and putting something else that the counties have to implement and take care of. Is any more discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is Gov. Deals, Surplus Property Sale. You have a list in front of you. You got the, the four items and their high bid. We need to accept, have a motion to accept these bids for the surplus property.
Declare surplus and accept.
Declare surplus and accept the bids.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Aye.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it probably has more than adequate crowd that we never have or reported what this resolution is about.
Yep. My question was same thing. Does this fit requirements of the state law? And is there any adverse things in it that are not required by the state law?
Well, this is them trying to change horses in the middle stream, isn't it?
What's happening under Virginia law, when I just got the adopted DEQ water laws today for DEQ, they went from us opting out of the stormwater regulations. And now they're saying under the water regulations, you will have to enforce these regulations, stormwater regulations. So far, I think I just read this fifty-seven counties have read past this same resolution or similar resolution that not to allow DEQ of the state of Virginia to adopt administrative codes like this pump and haul thing. With counties back into the regulation. So I think this is a good resolution. If you don't have our voice heard, you'll be in administrative regulations for DEQ. I don't think we won't.
I agree. And I'll be going to Richmond in the morning. I'm on the VACO Environmental and Agriculture Steering Committee. And we're looking, and we're having a meeting in the morning in Richmond just on this topic. To keep Richmond from putting all this back on, onto the counties. You know, they, they've created this monster and they need to not change our opt-out option for DEQ. As we opted out, DEQ's administering it now. And that's where it needs to stay. So VACO, Virginia Association of Counties is behind this and, and behind it one hundred percent for the state not going back and changing and putting something else that the counties have to implement and take care of. Is any more discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next item?
I had emailed to board members yesterday afternoon information about the Recreation Facilities Authority. If you want to have a discussion about that or you want to put that on the agenda some other time and talk about it in a committee meeting or how you all would like to do that. It's a draft ordinance for the Recreational Facilities Authority. Short memo explaining that process of how, you know, passing the ordinance, the ordinance will name the board members. The ordinance has some, I wouldn't necessarily call them blanks in it, but it's got like dates and times and people that need to be inserted in there. There's a general description of what you want the authority to do that could be modified based on what duties you want to give the authority, what you want them to manage. There, there was a set of bylaws which if an authority is created, then the new board for the authority would adopt the bylaws and would have to be able to have, make changes to those bylaws about how they want to operate. What the board would do is recommend those bylaws to that board to adopt. And they can review them. And if they have changes, they can. It's their, it's their board. They can choose how they want to operate once they exist. So that's a recommendation of bylaws. It's not anything that this board would adopt. We would just recommend it to the authority for their consideration to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we refer this to the Economic Development Committee for study and come back with a recommendation.
Or would it be best if we had just a board work session and take care of it?
Whichever way you want to do it. I think it needs to be a standalone effort or we're focused just on this.
I think to save time, I think, you know, Mr. Dalton, what next week, what would be a good day or board members, what would be a good day for us to have a evening work session?
Tuesday. We're going to be up here anyway.
We're going to be up here Tuesday.
We'll be up here Tuesday working.
We ain't staying all day.
Why?
I got to go drive a bus. I can't stay all day.
Tuesday means it's a Thursday. Be a good day. The Budget Committee meets Thursday at four thirty, I believe, four or four thirty.
Four.
Four o'clock.
So let's schedule a work session for Thursday, the twenty-second at five thirty, five?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
You said which day?
The twenty-second. And we'll just recess tonight's meeting.
Let me ask a question just out of curiosity. Why, why is it referred to as, I mean, even in the code, it's referred to recreational authority? And there's not anything about recreational activities in it? I mean, and I'm not talking about ours. I'm talking about, you know, the code section.
The way I understand most of the code of Virginia, all authorities like industrial development, economic development, recreational authorities, they intentionally were silent to allow vast authority under those type of boards so they could do multiple things. And what happens, what they've given you is the power, when you create the authority through an ordinance to set, to set your own guidelines of what they can do. So it wasn't there, but my understanding is that's the reason they left it sort of open. So that when you created those authorities, that you could set up either narrow definition or broad definition.
So recreational really, as far as the code, doesn't really mean anything. It's just a kind of a subheading. Okay.
Recreational, some may be tourism related, some may be swimming, some may be hiking, some development of football field. There's a, I think an entity in Virginia that built a civic center under the recreational authority guidelines.
But you can put together about any kind of authority you need under that. Okay.
Any more questions? Mr. Farley, you got anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Close session.
Just the close session for.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion going to closed session.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion if we go into.
Close session as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 to discuss personnel matter. And also as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7, consultation with Lee.
So, that when you created those authorities, that you could set up either narrow definition or broad definition.
So, recreational really, as far as the code, doesn't really mean anything. It's just kind of a subheading. Okay.
Recreational, some may be tourism related, some may be swimming, some may be hiking, some development of football field. There's a, I think an entity in Virginia that built a civic center under the recreational authority guidelines.
But you can put together about any kind of authority you need under that. Okay.
Any more questions? Mr. Farley, you got anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Close session.
Just the closed session for...
Okay, I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion if we go into...
Closed session as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 to discuss personnel matter, and also as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel.
Regarding a contract issue.
Okay, personnel matter is regarding a contract issue.
And a legal matter as well.
And a legal matter.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here or none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We are now in closed session.
All right, we ready? All right, I'll go ahead and read the certification. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors if such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, ratified the closed meeting. Any questions or discussion? Roll call vote, Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The chair votes aye. Before we recess, do you have anything else?
I will tell you that A Corridor, we interviewed seven people. Three of them were pretty fantastic, young people. You offered the job. The person that's currently working for another locality. It's on TV on a daily basis. He's going to come to A Corridor, direct the official interview in November. Probably around 31, 32 years old. It's going to be a great height.
Well, that's good.
It was a unanimous vote. I would say it was named, but the A Corridor full board has to vote on it on either... Either 22nd or 29th. Full board would be me. Planify the recognition. clarify. Hired two of them, two of them. We hired, we just put them in, we just have to have one. We entered into agreement, we got rid of all the rental space. We're going to relocate in the Maryland, this is the commission office part. They'll be providing all of the copy and secretary and everything else for feet, which is about half the one we work at. That helps stabilize the money that goes to Mount Rogers. That is one of the things management wanted to do, is to establish new pieces, helping manure allocation per capita. Move away the private rent and pay them, and help pay for some of the side. So, I think it's a win-win, and you're going to save money all the way around.
Especially from Mount Rogers. Okay.
You emailed today or yesterday from Swinging?
Yeah, what it meant?
I know what it meant, but are we still on track to go the route in the legislature?
Signs, I, I signed the 10, the signs are going up.
Okay. You weren't surprised by that letter?
Well, you know, it's been some time and effort trying to go that way. The next step in the legislative package, people asked me, Grayson, Carroll, Land, I somewhat sniffed, maybe Washington County, agreed to come forth with the same, support the legislation on the tobacco path, cigarette path, or any of them, follow. And also the legislation, so we could have some kind of legal facts and power and handle.
VACO is already there on this?
I think they are. You need to look besides you.
They are. That was, that's, when they were having the regional meetings, that was brought up in several of the regional meetings, Dean Lynch.
Our legislators, for everybody, I can't get much out of Smith.
Well, he's not going to be there anyway. Ralph is not. Oh, Smith County, I'm talking about Ralph Smith.
No, Smith County.
You know, we know that's a common theme. If you'd help us prepare a little package, we're talking for... I know we can develop support and tidewalling. York County's got the same condition we got. And they're on board. Things like me, if you got some support from different areas of the state, it would help to get on the agenda and get voted on.
I agree with that. Lastly, this week, I mean, Thursday, you got more than we did Thursday.
Okay. What time? I have a DSS meeting that morning at 8:30.
This Thursday?
Yeah. It's Thursday, third Thursday.
Don't know.
I, well, just let me know, I can postpone that. I mean, I won't go to it. I mean, I'll call Lewis and tell him I can't make it.
Quite frankly, I guess, this is going to be very special. We're doing a little bit of marketing on our own, we can... Because that's a prospect to work, come in fires, parks, wars, and that's agricultural.
Yep. Anything else? Anybody want to speak?
The extension office, I was told yesterday that their back porch is falling off the house, and they can't walk out on it. And the windows are still, have not been replaced. I haven't been after it. Didn't, didn't, I haven't been after it ever, but I haven't seen it. I mean, to me, the back porch, the fire station, they haven't, they haven't had to get out to it. I don't know. I was going right there, they don't get on to that.
I was out there the other day, just walked through the door, and your constituent stopped and said, "Was in the wrong place at the wrong time, working for a long job."
Actually, you don't know which one I was talking to. The one I was talking to wasn't even one of my constituents. They told me about it.
They did not miss it.
But actually, what I was told was that Billy was supposed to put windows in it, and he never would order the windows, and now the money's been spent somewhere else, and they have no money to put windows in. And I don't understand why Billy's done that if he did that. If we told him to put one in there.
Is somebody there watching the house?
Yes, he's been at it.
I'm not, I was at the Matthew Miller and Delph's office. They were in here.
Well.
What? Thursday, that was it.
Thursday. Okay. Anything else? Here or none, we're in recess until the 22nd at 5:00 PM.